We are now going to 8.0, which is citizens' participation. And I am going to read some guidelines. And these are for our audience tonight. We're going to start out, I think we have five people speaking, and then we'll bring in the others. So the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each regular board meeting. Tonight, we have more speakers than our socially distance, than our social distance guidelines can hold in this building. We have asked several individuals to wait outside until their time. We will contact you as your time to speak nears, and then you may enter the building and come on into the auditorium. There are a few guidelines, of course. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or a legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District One or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, you will have three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concern. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. There are other ways to bring situations like that to the board's attention. We want to give everyone who came tonight a chance to speak and the opportunity to speak. For that reason, board members will not reply to your remarks. And if someone makes the point or points you came to make before you, if you could just state that you agree with the previous speakers and not restate every point, that will also help us move along. We also ask you not to clap or make any comments either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes, as that also slows down the process considerably. If you wanted to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a card, that you give us your name and address for our records. And I think so far, everyone that wants to speak in here has given Ms. Hill a card. Am I correct? Is there anyone else in here that wanted to speak that didn't fill out a card? Okay. If, uh, we've already covered all that. Okay, so let's get going, because we like to hear from you guys.
Madam Chair, could I interject something here before we get these folks up to speak? I wanted everyone to be aware that the school board does not vote on our reentry plan. And Dr. Little, if I could ask you to go over that policy. There's a board policy that gives the superintendent the authority to make that decision. And I know that we've, I have been contacted like you would not believe. My phone has blown up, texts, phone calls, emails, Facebook. I've heard from a lot of our teachers, a lot of our parents. I've heard from students, and I'm sure that everyone here has. And don't think that this has not weighed heavy on our minds, I mean, beyond your belief. But Dr. Little, if you could just lend to that.
Yes, sir. I was going to talk about that during the superintendent's update, if that's okay. But it just kind of pleases the board. So really, from our end, and as we've thought about how best to approach it, the board provides the superintendent authority over issues of instruction and operations and those types of things. And so because of that, that's why we're presenting this tonight. But the vote we are providing is to the calendar, and the calendar is going to be an integral part of the plan. So that's really, in the 30,000-foot view, is what the issue is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, I'm going to call first Mr. Anthony, is it Bertone? Bertone. He's going to discuss the reopening of the school, and he lives at 104 DeValle Court, Lexington, and at 29072. So thank you, Mr. Bertone.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, before I get started, I'd just like to inform the board that I am a teacher of 45 years. I'm on the Board of Education, and I've been 12 years in another state. What I am considering...
...an 8% and a high of 33.6%. And I don't even want to comment on the death rate that's going on. This is serious, because this should be well below 10% before this is even considered. That should be like for 14 days. And that's according to the C Z D. So I don't know how we could open up school with this kind of numbers. I brought with me today an article that appeared, which I'll give to the board, in the state paper, July 13th. The headline is "Complications That Deadly Kids Report in South Carolina", and this deals with COVID. Okay? Also, I have some other information I have here that's related to several other articles involving it. This is one that's from CNN, and it has task force reports, says 18 states Corona red zone should roll back reopening. And we are in a Corona red zone. That is something you really need to consider here. I also have a number of questions, and I realize you can't answer these tonight. But I would like to know when I can get answers to these. Okay? And who will answer them for me? I'll read them off rather quickly, because I only know I have three minutes. And then I'll hand them to you. How are we going to handle students who arrive early for school? Will students report directly to the classrooms upon arrival in school? This is a serious problem, because when I was a teacher in this district, kids were arriving at 6:30 in the morning, sometimes 6 o'clock. How is this going to be handled? Okay? Will parents be allowed in the building? Anyone we introduce into that building is going to create a possibility of infection. We need to control every environmental aspect of that building in order to ensure that students don't get infected and bring home infection to their parents and their grandparents. Okay? How are we going to handle students who refuse to comply with wearing a mask? That's going to be another problem. How are we going to handle students who have I E Ps or 504s prohibiting mask use? Because it is my understanding, and some parents are going back to the school district and actually requesting meetings to change and amend 504s. Who's going to clean the building? I've heard that from Dr. Little. But I want to know, if his staff is going to clean a building, who's going to certify it's clean? If we get an outside contractor to come in, that should be part of that each and every day. That we need to get that certified. We need to know the building is clean. Okay. How often? How often do you have to, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I have a number of things here which I would like to... Yes. The only, the only other thing that I'd like to say, and I realize this is over three minutes, but it's very, very important. If teachers contact COVID or come in contact with somebody that does have COVID, are they going to be guaranteed their full salary while they're out? Are they going to be guaranteed not to lose sick days? Or is it going to be treated as a comp case? Which is a disaster. Because I had a comp case in this district, and it was a disaster. So I'm very concerned about that for our staff. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the board's time on this. And I know you have a very difficult job ahead of you. And I know Dr. Little has a very difficult job ahead of him. No, I think other people want to get in here. No, I think there's other people who want to come in. I don't want to take away from your time. Okay?
But it's on YouTube right now, too, if you want to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We now like to welcome Shannon Sharp. She's going to discuss the reopening of schools. She lives at 741 Hallman-Wagman Road in Leesville, and she has a child at Gilbert High School. So Ms. Sharp? Yeah, go ahead. They're ready.
First of all, I'd just like to thank you for allowing us to comment and to speak. There's a lot of stuff I would like to discuss, but due to the time constraints, I'm just going to advocate for my particular child. And I'm aware that everybody's situation is very different, and I respect that. To begin with, the facts are very confusing, I think, to us as parents and just as a community as whole. We see numbers come out one day, and then by the time you wake up in the morning, their numbers have changed, or someone's saying that they're not correct. So I think it's hard for anybody to make a decision based off of ever-changing information. And I agree that, you know, as he said, that you're all in a position that's very difficult right now, because you have 28,000-plus students, and all their parents have a different opinion. So I respect you for what you are trying to do. I personally filled out every survey that was sent to me, including one asking how I wanted my child to go back to school. I didn't agree with the two options that I was given, because I want five-day face-to-face. I may be in a minority when I say that. I may be in the majority. I'm not sure. But that is what I would prefer for my child. Sorry if I get emotional. This has been a whirlwind for my family. I understand that this is not a cookie-cutter decision. It's not a one-size-fits-all. But I think that parents should be given that option of that face-to-face or that virtual, based on the needs of their personal situations and their children. This is why I get emotional. As a parent of a rising senior, there are so many concerns that have already affected my family. The academic shortfalls that my child is worried she's going to face. She is college-bound, scholarship-bound. She's already lost some of those scholarships by her sport being deleted this year. So she will not get those sport-based scholarships. We worry about the socialization issues that she has faced, which have then become emotional issues, which have then played into her mental health issues, which have then affected our entire family and the dynamic of our household. It's really a domino effect, if you will. I'm going to go over on my time, too, and I apologize. I'm sorry. Everyone has shortcomings in life and disappointments, and I completely understand that. But what I can't fathom is being 17 years old and my entire senior year being one big disappointment. My daughter looked me in my face and said, "If they do not open school up, it will be as if this year of my life never existed." They look forward to Fall Sport Recognition Night, class rink ceremonies, Friday night lights on the football field, prom, homecoming, school pageants, graduations, senior trips, et cetera. That list goes on forever. And to fathom that she may miss every single one of them is a hard pill to swallow. These are milestones and memories that they'll never get the opportunity to have again. Everyone wants normalcy for our children. But I feel like a lot of these issues have not been addressed, and they have been submitted. I've gotten no response for them. I believe in the public school education system. I used to work in it myself, at Gilbert Primary School and in Orangeburg School District Five for 17 years. I'm no longer in the school system. But I believe, just like every other nurse, healthcare worker, firefighter, EMT, paramedic, grocery store clerk, gas station clerk, teachers are essential. They were trained and hired to do a job. And unfortunately, that is five-day face-to-face instruction. My child is a hands-on learner. She does not do well virtually. She made it through the end of the year, but it was a struggle, especially with two essential working parents in the home. Even at 16 years old, she was old enough to be left alone, but we were not there to guide her and to make sure she was doing those expectations.
Ms. Sharp, you have exceeded your time. Can you just kind of summarize your final points? And because if the other people want to speak tonight, too.
I do believe that at this point, I would like to ask that parents be giving, given, excuse me, that five-day face-to-face option. I would like to see it there and to see statistically where we are. I believe that our class sizes would actually decrease, because a lot of parents may choose the 100% virtual, and that may help some of the issue on its own. So I would ask that that be put into consideration for the parents.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
And Dr. Little, would it be okay? Can we have somebody call Ms. Sharp in the next couple of days? Okay, we'll expect a phone call from her.
We'll do that for anybody who speaks, just as an aside. We'll make sure everybody's contacted. We'll follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Okay, let me put my glasses back on. Are we sanitizing back there? I'd now like to call up Rebecca Hogan. She's going to speak on the impact of schools not reopening on kids and special needs and I E Ps. She lives at 151 Hilly Rock Road in Lexington. She has a child at Beachwood Middle, and they were previously at Pleasant Hills. So, Ms. Hogan?
Thank you for giving us all the opportunity to speak this evening by opening the doors to folks in the community. To show up for a face-to-face forum shows that you care and you're really ready to listen to our concerns, so thank you for that. I also want to say that I appreciate the district's attempts to gather opinions of parents through surveys and emails and discussions. However, I'm a little disappointed in the lack of discussion and information regarding students with I E Ps and special needs. These students, as well as the underprivileged, are suffering the most and should be top priority when making plans to reopen. My son is a rising sixth grader and has fragile X syndrome, a genetic disorder that, among many things, causes a learning disability. Some reports indicate that many general education students have already lost a full year of mathematics skills due to the inefficiency of distance learning. Imagine the skill loss that a special needs student has suffered. Kids like mine need one-on-one instruction, and virtual is inadequate for many kids with disabilities. We, as parents, should not have to settle for this, and it's not right. And so I'm pleading with you to please do the right thing for these kids. The governor, the legislators, and the AAP are backing you to send these kids back to school full-time for face-to-face instruction. The support is there. As you all know, the CARES Act has provided our State Department of Education with $216 million for elementary and secondary schools as a resource for districts to use for services and tools to reopen safely. I would like to know how you all have used or planned to use this money to serve students with disabilities, as I'm fully aware that you can use the CARES Act money to serve this population. Teachers are extremely essential to our children's development, mental health, and overall well-being. As Governor McMaster said, nothing is more essential than giving each of our children an excellent education. It is in our constitution, and we must do it. Additionally, the governor stated that parents should have the choice between full-time face-to-face learning and distance learning. With the district's current proposal, there is no choice being given to parents for month one. Please do the right thing and give us the choice that our children need. And I do realize that you guys have a lot to deal with on a lot of different levels. It's just this special needs community need educators. And I feel like I'm not, I honestly feel like I'm not even up here for my son. Obviously, I am. I'll do anything for him if it means, you know, sending him somewhere else that will service him. But it's more for, you know, the parents that I do know that won't speak up. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. We'll have someone touch base with you, too, especially about that special needs piece. And y'all are welcome to stay. We're going to rotate at the end of this group. And if you want to stay and hear the other speakers, you don't have to dart out quite this second if you want to. Okay, we're now going to call on Dr. Jeffrey Travis, who is going to talk about five-day face-to-face. He lives at 390 Yodding Road, and he has a child at New Providence Elementary. Dr. Travis?
Oh, that's fine. Well, I just appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. And again, I'm here to support the five-day face-to-face option. I think it's just very important for our children. You know, we experienced the virtual side of this at the end of the last school year, and it was really difficult. It was difficult for our child and even our college-age kids. They just didn't do as well. They didn't do as well academically. They didn't do as well socially. And so we've had some experience with that. And I just think that in the county that we live in, that we should offer our parents the option. You know, during the YouTube videos that we watched, it was stated over and over again how important it was that our number-one priority was safety. Our number-one priority is safety. I would beg to differ. I'd say your number-one priority is education. And I know you take that seriously. I know all of you are very serious people and good at your jobs. But safety is not the number-one priority. Educating our children is the number-one priority. And we want you to do that safely. All parents want you to do that safely, of course. But we, as parents, have seen how our kids didn't do well for just a very short period of time. And we just want to be given the option of either virtual learning at home, if you're concerned about the risks, or face-to-face. We don't want a hybrid model. We weren't given that choice in the survey. There was no five-day face-to-face option. And so we don't feel like that, you know, that survey completely represents everyone's feelings on this. And that's why we come tonight to say that we want a face-to-face option five days a week. You know, the other options that exist for childcare during these times are probably not as safe as having our students in school. Daycares for teachers' kids or daycares for extended care probably are not going to socially distance our kids as well as our school does. You know, 20% of people have already chosen the virtual five-day arm of this. And so there's already some social distancing that's happened. Right now, we're only at 80% of the students that might show up. So I know there's difficulties, but I think the risks to our children and their health has been well outlined. I think the American Academy of Pediatrics has spoken on this. But I think the, it's a false equivalency. I think the risk of keeping our kids out of school is actually higher than the health risk. And I think that a lot of parents see that. They saw that during the last three months of the last school year. It just didn't go well. And I think just saying we're going to try harder or do better, I think we all know that it's just not the same. It's not equivalent, the two options. And we just want to be given the option. We just want to be given the option that we can bring our kids to school five days a week, face-to-face. And I'm not real sure why that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Travis. Okay, we're now going to call on Ms. Charlotte Robertson. She's going to talk about the five-day option face-to-face. She lives at 228 Harbor Vista Circle in Lexington, and she has a child at Riverbluff. So, Ms. Robertson?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I agree with the last, everyone except the first. And not that I disagree with the first speaker, but I do wish for my upcoming rising senior that he's allowed to go face-to-face for five days. I just don't feel he's getting the education that he needs to prepare for college. And I don't really want to repeat everything everyone said, but I do fully agree that that's in the best interest. And if we could at least get the option to be able to send our kids five days, I think they would do much better and get a better education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Okay, that concludes that group. So I'm going to ask all those people that spoke if you wouldn't mind heading out. And I apologize that we don't have...
And to the speakers, we are showing this on our YouTube channel live. So if you'd like to watch the presentation that we will be doing later, that may also provide you with some more information. Thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Hill, is there anyone else waiting to come in? Okay, okay. No, that's good. That's good. Now, did this group get to this getting ready to speak? Did you guys get to hear the guidelines? Do I need to repeat those? Okay. Okay, I'll repeat those when they come in. Okay. That's fine. Is that it? Okay. We should have had some music playing during musical chairs. Is that everyone, Mayor Beth, that's speaking for right now? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the guidelines again. The Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each of our regular board meetings. Tonight, we have more speakers than our social distancing guidelines could hold in the building, and that's why we're rotating you guys in and out. There are a few guidelines to speaking, of course. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District One or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, you will have three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concerns. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. There are other ways to bring those situations to our attention. We want to give everyone who came tonight a chance to speak. For that reason, board members will not reply to your remarks. If someone makes the point or points you came to make before you, if you could just state that you agree with the previous speakers and not restate every point, that helps us, too. We also ask that you not clap or make any comments either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes, as that slows down the process considerably. If you wanted to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a card. Does everyone that wants to speak tonight, were they given a card? Is there anybody left that wants to speak that did not get a card? Okay. We will begin. So we're going to continue. And this is a group, I think, so I'm going to call you all up at once. This group is speaking about athletics. I have Lemiran Jenkins, who will be speaking. This person lives at 112 Red Ash Lane in Lexington, and they have a child at Riverbluff High School. And you can go ahead and head to the microphone. Let's see. They will be joined by Michelle Faust, who is not speaking. She is commenting, I mean, she's here about athletics, and she lives at 2 Sagefire Court in Irma, and she has a child at Riverbluff High School. We also have Walter Hutto, who is not speaking, but will be joining the podium. He lives at 250 Glen Kirk Lane and has a child at Riverbluff High School. So if y'all want to go ahead, and let's see. Mr. Jenkins is the speaker, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity, the board, to have the citizens of Lexington be able to come and speak with you this evening. Thank you to Dr. Little and all of the government bodies. We have a very brief comment. We will probably not take our three minutes here. But on behalf of the Riverbluff Gator Nation Booster Club, and also for Kevin Fringer, the president of the Lexington High School Booster Club, Mary Stargill, who's president of the White Knoll High Booster Club, and also Rob Shirley, who is the president of Gilbert High School Booster Club, and all of the governing bodies of the Booster Club for Pelearion High School, we would like to express our full support and commitment to our athletic programs and to our district administration in these difficult times of pandemic. We also sincerely appreciate and affirm Dr. Little's support for doing whatever it takes to allow students to the opportunity to participate in athletics, expressing his remarks to the South Carolina High School League. It is our request to the Lexington County School District One Board to continue to allow our students to work out and compete in athletics unless they are counseled by the Office of the Governor or the South Carolina High School League. When students are engaged in athletics, it leads to improved mental and physical health, which helps them through difficult times like the ones that we're experiencing during this pandemic. We are very appreciative of how the commitment and the level of support of all of the coaching staff that they have followed all safety protocols and understand the difficulties that are associated with continuing to compete. So we are here today as a collective group of Booster Club members for all high schools that we are pledging our full support, both financially and in volunteer hours, and in any way we can help them and our student athletes. We also understand the risks that are involved in playing sports and believe that parents and students should continue to consider the risk before signing a waiver to play. We want to thank the board and the administration for their commitment to athletics. And if there's any way that we can help, we're here to serve. We understand that the task that you have before you is extremely difficult, and we know that there are a lot of hard decisions that need to be made. We're in an excellent, excellent school district. We've done a tremendous job. And I know that our education and well-being of our students from athletics and academics is first priority. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, Ms. Faust, and Mr. Hutto. And I also want to personally thank you for serving as... you for serving as volunteers. I think you're associated with the Booster Club at Riverbluff, correct? Anytime somebody volunteers, we really appreciate you, so thank you for doing that.
Ms. Smith, can I just take a point of order to give Mr. Jenkins a little shout-out for coordinating the first Gator Nation golf tournament? And they raised more than $5,500 for the foundation's Carrying Hearts Fund, and he was the driver for that.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, that's great. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, now, at this time, let me put my glasses back on again, I'm going to call on Rome Lindler, who is going to be speaking about the five-day schedule. Um, they live at, do you have a street address, Mr. Lindler?
Catawba Trail.
Okay, lives on Catawba Trail in Lexington and has a child at Lexington Middle School. So, Mr. Lindler?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, everybody, for having us. Uh, I wanted to talk about two distinct things that I don't know if the school district has taken into account. Uh, one is learning disabilities, and I'm talking about, there is a population right now that has disabilities that we don't know about. Has anybody in this school district looked to see if there are students that have a learning disability that cannot learn online? Because everybody was thrown into online. Nobody, right here, the definition of a learning disability is a condition given rise to difficulties in acquiring knowledge and skills to the level expected of those at the same age, especially when not associated uh, being physically handicapped or emotionally handicapped. Uh, by the Department of Health, a significantly reduced ability to understand new and complexed information. Basically, we got a population that has never been tested to see if they can learn by virtual learning. Has that testing gone, has it been done, and is it going to be done with students to determine if they have a learning disability where they can't learn in virtual environment? Uh, public law, not, Public Law 94-142 was written handicap, for handicap accessibility, but in 1990, it was changed to be all disabilities. And the six pillars of learning disabilities are IEPs, appropriate public education, which right now, we don't have appropriate education. Hybrid model is not appropriate education. Least restrictive environment, we don't have least resisted environment. Appropriate evaluation, kids haven't been evaluated, and parent and teacher participation. All these people in here were not given the choice of a five-day option on the survey, which was a total failure. The next thing I want to talk about is true risk assessment, okay? I don't think there's been a true risk assessment done. One of the safest places for these kids to be is in a classroom. It's safer than being at home. Uh, right now, I've got the CDC guidelines from June 24, 2019, which reflects all the data from the CDC of how kids were killed, and excuse that, excuse that for being, but they passed away. There were um, total of, let's see, right here, almost fifteen hundred students that were killed just in motor vehicle accidents. When you're not in school, your chances are going up. If you do a true risk assessment, what are all the other things that can happen to kids while they are at home and not in school for those three days? Okay? How many of them are being abused? How many of them are being self-inflicted, uh, suicide, accidental poisonings? Okay? I've heard nobody talk about the risk of kids being at home for those three days and not being in school. The chances of them dying because of COVID in a classroom is less than any of these other lists or things that could happen to them out here, and I don't think it's been taken into consideration. Uh, my son, um, changed emotionally. We had to take him to the doctor. He, uh, basically lost all his friends at school, lost all his friends at church, ball field, all these kind of things, and he literally, we had to take him to a dermatologist because he was scratching and clawing himself because he wasn't in school. So, when you talk about true risk assessment, are the kids better in school five days a week than being at home three additional days? Because these numbers are going to do nothing but go up because kids have more chances to drink poison, bicycle accidents, car accidents, uh, and different sexual predators. Everybody's talking about trafficking, and nobody has taken those risks into us, into whether they've come up.
Mr. Lindler, your time's up. I'm really sorry. We have some other people that want to speak. I'm really sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have someone touch base with you in the next couple of days. You can stay if you want to hear the other comments. I don't know, is there anyone else left to come in out there?
Yes.
Okay. We're now going to call, okay, we're now going to call on Kelly Benedict. She's going to discuss the survey. She lives at 268 Creek Branch Drive in Lexington, and she has a child at Riverbluff. Ms. Benedict?
That's all right. That's fine. Well, thanks for giving us the forum to be able to speak. I'm going to just speak to, and I know your rules are, you know, don't repeat what everybody else is saying, but I'm pretty sure that what I have to say just compounds what everyone else has just said. It's a common theme. I think it's important to look at. So I just jotted something down quick. I speak on behalf of the hundreds of parents that have expressed concerns that not having a five-day option for learning put their child at a greater risk for mental health and academic decline, and that risk was way more dangerous than the symptoms of the COVID for the group under eighteen. I would like to request that the board direct the administration to provide this as an option. I'd also like to request a survey be sent out, an actual survey. I don't feel like, none of us really feel like the survey that came out in the beginning was worth much. I think the second one was better, but it still didn't give us all the options that we needed. We're missing one, very important one, as you can hear by every single person that has spoken. We were not given that option, and we would like for you to publish the results of the survey so that we are all on the same page and it's not hidden in where we can't see it. So that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Please think about the five-day. Everybody needs it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benedict. Okay, we're now going to call on Erica Lynn Barnes. Um, she's going to be talking about face-to-face learning and athletics. She lives at 536 Plymouth Pass Drive, and she's a Riverbluff parent. Ms. Barnes?
Hey, thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to speak. We do appreciate your jobs and how difficult these decisions are. I work in a field where I know how difficult it is to please everybody, so I know that's impossible, but along with most of the people here, I am looking for a five-day face-to-face option. My child is a rising junior. This is a critical year for her. Scholarship's coming to play. She's taking a very difficult course load, and with the virtual learning that we had in the spring, our kids are not staying at home and doing what they need to do. I mean, they're out living their best lives. So we, I mean, I do feel like they're safer in school. Um, I think structure is important. I think socialization is crucial. I think mental health is, you know, definitely, people who don't have mental health issues, things are starting to come into play, as we've seen with some close friends. Um, we also have two athletes, and most of our kids, most of the parents that have athletic athletes, they've been doing this their whole lives. I haven't come across any parent of an athlete who doesn't want their kid to participate in sports. I, along with most people I know, would sign a waiver. We understand the risks, but again, I feel like if they're not in school, they're not going to be at home, social distancing from everybody else. They're still going to be exposed to their grandparents. A lot of kids don't have what it takes to just stay home, that structure to work a regular school day and do what they need to do at home, no matter how good of a student they are. Um, the last quarter, my daughter got almost a full-time job, and she took four EEP classes, and she passed all of them, but she wasn't doing schoolwork six, seven hours a day. Um, you know, I just, I just want to, I hate to see athletics taken away from athletes' scholarships. Um, a lot of people that were juniors and seniors this past year, they broke records, they never even got to showcase some of their records, and it's life-changing for some of these kids. A lot of these kids don't have, I mean, an athletic scholarship is their way to go to college. So, um, you know, we're facing ACTs, SATs. I just want some normalcy for our kids in five days back in the classroom. I feel like if we're going two days, there's not minimizing risk. I mean, as much as if they were, yeah, I feel like if they were at home, they're at more risk. Um, you know, I know we're looking at the death to positive cases ratio. That's significantly going down. I track it every day. Before, we were at four percent, and we're at 1.6% of the death to the positive cases ratio. Um, so, and it's not impacting our children as much as some other general populations, our other demographics. So, I mean, I hate it for anybody to obviously perish due to this disease, but I'm also in an industry where I'm working with a lot of people that are positive right now, and a lot of them just have colds, and then we have other people that are really suffering. So I'm not trying to take away from anybody's decision. I feel like you're scared of it, then you should, by all means, keep your child home. Um, but if for those of us who want our kids to be in school, give us the opportunity to put them in school.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Okay. And last but not least, it's not the Barnes. So you're just ditto-ing her? Okay, so we'll put y'all together. So the, um, okay, anyone else want to speak to the board before we move on from citizens' Okay, let me finish filling this out. Hold on, just to make sure when we look at these later, we'll know that these are together. Okay. Okay, if there's anybody else in the lobby that wants to come in, we do have some open chairs. Um, Mr. Caldwell, is there anybody else out there that wants to come in?
Sure.
Anybody else want to come in?
It's just our staff now.
Okay.